Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council for Monday, July 29th. Ms. Banks, would you please call the hall?
Thank you.
Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Lam.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Ms. Seymour.
Here.
Ms. George.
Here.
Mr. Seimer.
I'm here.
You have some of the numbers present.
Okay. I would like to ask everyone in the audience who has a cell phone to turn it on and vibrate, or to turn it off if you would. And next, I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Before we get into our agenda tonight, I'd like to make a sad announcement. The -- it's with great sadness that I'm informing our audience that retired Southfield neighborhood activist Barbara Davis passed away while visiting her son in Millville, California on July 7th. In the 1970s and 80s, Mrs. Davis was very active in neighborhood preservation. She's former president of the Magnolia Neighborhood Association and president of the Southfield Homeowners Federation. Mrs. Davis spearheaded and never could head off real estate blockbuster tactics that were fairly common in the city in the 1970s, and was instrumental in the formation of the Southfield Home Information Center and the Southfield Total Living Commission. With others, she worked on marketing Southfield as a place to live and work, particularly seeking persons who were coming into Metro Detroit as corporate transferees. Mrs. Davis was responsible for Southfield's All-American City Designation, which is on the wall behind me. And this designation came in 1979 from the National Civic League. She coordinated the nomination process with the assistance of fellow neighborhood activists Fred Grover and Phil Head. Southfield's nomination was based on the city's efforts to provide subsidized housing, build additional housing for senior adults, and address unethical real estate practices. This award application detailed the contributions to city government -- of the city government, rather, to Southfield Home Information Center, the Total Living Commission, the League of Women Voters, Southfield Homeowners Federation, the Interfaith Center for Racial Justice, the Southfield County Board Realtors, and various neighborhood associations in addressing these issues and bringing about change. A celebration of Mrs. Davis's life is being planned for Saturday, August 24th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the Horrani Studios on East Grand Boulevard in Detroit. Mrs. Davis, a resident of 5,000 Town Center, died in her sleep at the age of 70. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving on to something much brighter, I would like to call out the mayor and Ruth Adlersnay. Good evening, once again, council. I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Ruth Adlersnay, who's been a resident of Southfield for several decades now. Recently, the city of Southfield held a mid-century modern architecture tour. Cranbrook held a symposium on mid-century modern architecture. LPU held the Open County Planners Symposium in June on mid-century modern architecture. And we have with us in Southfield someone who is at the root of the modernism movement in America. So I'd like to -- this is a joint resolution from the mayor and council, and if the mayor doesn't mind, I'll continue the reading. Joint resolution of recognition of Ruth Adlersnay. Whereas longtime Southfield resident Ruth Adlersnay is a leading textile designer of mid-20th century, and whereas Mrs. Adlersnay immigrated to the United States from Germany prior to the outbreak of World War II. And whereas she graduated from Detroit Cass Technical High School and received a Bachelor of Fine Arts degree from Rhode Island School of Design, followed by a Master's degree from Cranbrook Academy of Art. And whereas her talents were recognized early in her career when she won the Chicago Tribune competition in 1947, the prestigious International Celine Corporation Award in 1950, and had her works on display in the Detroit Institute of Arts that same year. Whereas Mrs. Adlersnay and her late husband Edward operated a retail store in Detroit featuring her designs for contemporary home furnishings. Whereas her textiles are included in the permanent collections of the Brooklyn Museum, the Smithsonian, the Whitney Museum, the Albert and Victoria Museum in London, the Art Institute of Chicago, and the Henry Ford Museum, among others. And whereas in June 2012, the College of Creative Studies in Detroit awarded Mrs. Adlersnay an honorary doctoral degree at its commencement ceremonies. And in June 2013, she was the keynote speaker at Cranbrook for the Mid-Century Modern Michigan Design Symposium. Whereas Mrs. Adlersnay continues to design new woven fabrics and interior spaces at her Southfield home studio, including the tradition of artistic excellence she began -- or rather continuing the tradition of artistic excellence she began more than 60 years ago. Whereas, or now therefore be a result, that we, the mayor and council, the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan do hereby recognize and congratulate Ruth Adlersnay for her long and distinguished career in mid-century modern design. Congratulations. Just to give you a little flavor of Mrs. Adlersnay's work, it's a little hard to see, but there's some color, I think, on the screen, but yeah, we're -- And Mr. Fraser, we can just hop through these very quickly to get a little flavor of Mrs. Adlersnay's work. This is one of her home interiors. We can go through these. This is her working at home in one of her many fabric designs and several others. She's currently under contract with NOSI and NOLA Associates. Okay. And the -- you may recognize the last one, this was in the Southfield history. It's on the end pages. It's called My Neighborhood. And again, working at home. She -- I was at Mrs. Adlersnay's, visiting her recently, and the whole time I'm there, the phone keeps ringing. She's a lady in demand and still very, very active in designing fabrics. So we'd like to say a few words.
I appear before you as a humble designer who has enjoyed Southfield amenities for more than 30 years. I'm extremely grateful to Ken Seimer, Dr. Seimer, who shares my passion for the detail that make up a work of art and the unity of design concepts from the broadest characteristic to the smallest detail. Realizing the Southfield's significant contribution to development, and with your indulgence, I would very much like to talk a little bit about my thinking about design and my philosophy of it. Design is the art of solving problems, to make the connection between material concepts and a recognition of choices and constraints. Good design cannot be separated from structure and function. There is no such thing as an unimportant detail. Each solution must articulate the needed addresses. In other words, the problem really becomes at the heart of the joy of identifying the problem. And the joy of identifying these limitations is the result of tight and painful discipline. Discipline is the quality intrinsic in the work. Rules and they are are those four-way applied, not submission to a strain, only respect for them. So design is the art of the pastime, remembering that courage is the key factor in every form of artistic and creative process. And with that in mind, I wish you continued success.
Can you bring somebody with you to the meeting? Jacob?
Yes. My goodness.
Stand up. Jacob, you attended University of Michigan graduate, you're back in our graduate. Right. Good to go. Thank you very much. And, you know, the whole time you're reading about the detail of design, I'm thinking about how we do the same thing in our budget process. We have to think of every little detail. So it's a different world.
Thank you.
The design of a budget. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. And mayor, here to come right back. I'm going to vary a little bit from our agenda. Next, we have minutes, but I'm going to go to skip down to the mayor's portion of the agenda because we do have an appointment. And mayor, the floor is yours.
Good evening, council. Tonight, pursuant to the charter, I am responsible to appoint a city attorney with confirmation and approval of the city council. And with that, I come before you tonight to bring to you a recommendation. Before I give you my recommendation, I wanted to read for the viewing public what this job summary and description of a city attorney is. The city attorney is appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council. This is a contractual position. Wages and benefits will be in keeping with those of the city management team. The city attorney is responsible for the proper administration of legal affairs of the city. The city attorney provides legal advice and counsel to the mayor, the city council, and other city officials, boards, commissions, and agencies on all matters relating to their duties and the business of the city. In addition, the city attorney directs the prosecution of criminal, traffic, and city ordinance infractions, and represents the city in all legal affairs. The city attorney has an important stack of attorneys and who are employed, and functions such as prosecuting criminal charges, civil traffic infractions, and conducting legal research, responding to citizens' inquiries, complaints, drafting ordinances, reviewing contracts, and attending various boards and commission meetings. As the council is aware, the position of city attorney became vacant since the death of our longtime city attorney, Jack Barris, on January 7th, 2013, following a lengthy illness. The position of city attorney is a key position in our organization, responsible to provide the advice and counsel to the honorable body. Pursuant to the city charter, section 5.5B, it is the duty of the mayor to appoint a city attorney with approval of council. Council, despite the high degrees of essential, that these vital functions that I outlined to you earlier be performed in order to protect the good order of the city and the welfare of our citizens. I am therefore pleased to present to you my selection of Susan Ward Wacowski as our city attorney, and ask that you approve this appointment effective immediately. Susan, to be turned.
Yes, Ms. Jordan.
I make a motion that we approve the city attorney's appointment by our mayor, and that's been through board.
Support been moved by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Moss. We'll have discussion, I'm sure. So we have a motion on the floor. Mayor Lawrence, you have something else?
Yes, I want the council and the public to know that this position is critical to our city. Sue Ward and I had many discussions, but we have all witnessed her serving and the capacity of our city attorney. And I am very excited and pleased that she has the leadership skills and the passion to represent the city, and it will be to our benefit to her, and I hope the council agrees.
Okay. Any comments from council? We will take those. Seymour?
Thank you, Ms. Duke-Chen. I think those of us who've been in council for any period of time have come to know this work with Kowski very well, and to see the quality of her work. She is an example of the best that the city has to offer. She is conscientious, she's hardworking, she's dedicated, she's everything a woman wants, and a city attorney extremely qualified. She represents the best of our city, and I'm delighted to see her be appointed to see the need of our prominent city attorney. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Van?
Congratulations, Sue. Sue Ward has been acting as deputy city attorney for a long time now, and in my estimation, she is the best city attorney in the state of Michigan. Thank you, Sue. Good luck.
Mr. Fracass?
Yes, sure. I'd like to congratulate Sue. You know, having worked with her over the years, she's just way beyond her duties here. She just goes out in every which way, keeping the city on top and advising us correctly. I just think that she's done a great job, and I truly appreciate what she's done and the hours that she has put in, over and above anybody that could ever imagine the work. So, Sue, congratulations.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I just wanted to also present congratulations to Ms. Ward. I didn't get the opportunity to work as closely as other members of council did with our previous city attorney, Mr. Barris. So really, for the most part, when I was elected onward, it was Ms. Ward, her expertise that I relied on, her advice that I relied on, her diligence, her ethics, and I know that the city is going to be completely well-served by you. You are a master of what you do, and I appreciate your hard work on behalf of the city and your expertise and advice to this council and our mayor.
And I would echo everything else that's been said by my colleagues, but on a personal note, I truly value the counsel that you've provided me as a city official. Thank you very much. Ms. Jordan.
Can I make the motion? It's like a big one, because I do miss Jack, and I miss his wisdom, but I know that you are filling great shoes. Your wisdom, your sensitivity, your knowledge, your treatment of everyone, being very fair, and I just appreciate that. And I know you're going to have great years ahead of you serving the city of Southfield and this council in the future. Thank you.
I'm starting to think Mr. Fraser's voice was lost. I'm sure what happened.
It wasn't really lost, he just didn't call me. I would like to -- well, this is a little pre-choresia, we haven't taken the vote yet.
But based on the comments. Can you indicate where things are going?
Based on the comments that I've raised so far, I'm not at all nervous about how the vote's going to come out. But what I would like to say is, in the time that I've worked with Sue, either when she was Jack's deputy, or since she has been running the legal department, I want to say thank you for all of the inane questions that I've asked you, and you've kept your cool. And I'm sure that when you hung up the phone, you scratched your head and said, "I wonder why that calls me." But you've always made me feel like the question that I asked, however inane it was, it was an important question, and you gave me the time that I needed to get the thing resolved. And I know that once the vote is taken, that you will continue to do a great job like you have been doing now. You haven't been auditioning for the job, you've been doing the job, and I look forward to working with you from now on. Thank you.
Well, with that, let's make it official. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay.
Mr. Chair, the family, Susan Atier, and I have someone come forward, and our city clerk to come forward to administer the oath. And I also want to say, your comments denied one of the driving factors in looking at who should be our next city attorney, because I knew that this council had reaped the benefits and a lot of confidence in her and that's why we need our city attorney. Sue, who's here with you?
Well, I will introduce my husband, in case you don't know him. Sorry. I have my daughter Emma, my daughter Sarah, my son Robert, I have my brother Mike, and one of my best friends from way back, Sue Schneider. So that's everybody. Oh, and Michael Wang, who is Emma's boyfriend, so he should come up as well.
Yeah, let us all.
She's in taping.
We appreciate your sharing your mother with us.
Okay, Sue, you'll raise your right hand. Your wife's wife, huh? That you will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the states, and the Southfield City Charter, and that states please perform the duties of the city of Southfield City Attorney and of for the city of Southfield County, State of Michigan, according to the rest of your vote.
I will.
Your added order. What have you removed?
There, Officer Bettin. I'd like to see if he ushered out, if he is. There's no call for that kind of disturbance in chambers.
Mr. President, we're going to have our city attorney come make the walk and introduce her. Thank the Lord, everyone, as our new city attorney.
Mr. President, I'd like to just say something to the family that made them for allowing us to let you share your mother with us, because we really appreciate the job she's done.
Think we all got that sentiment? Okay, continuing on with our agenda, next we have minutes.
Gentlemen.
All right, Mr. Fracass?
I move the Committee of the Whole Meeting of March 21st, the Committee of the Whole Meeting of May 6th, the regular meeting of May 20th, the Committee of the Whole Meeting of June 3rd, the Committee of the Whole Meeting of June 10th, and the Special Meeting of June 17th, as submitted to council.
Support been moved by Mr. Fracass and supported by Mr. Frasier. Any discussion?
If I have two questions to the chair to our city planner, just wondering with the Committee of the Whole Minutes of May the 6th, we could possibly get an update on the downward canvas project, as well as the casual dining proposal on Port Street in Southfield, to see who is in pain at this point. It doesn't have to be today, but it's an update in the future. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote? All of us in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have minutes. Moving on to our consent agenda. This evening, we have six items. Five of these have been reviewed previously in council study sessions or in committees, and the remaining item is the continuation of the longstanding annual contract. So let me begin. Consent agenda item A is the continuation of the contract established in 1998 for a social worker to be on site at McDonald Towers River Park Place. Ninety percent of the total cost for this position is provided by the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, with the remaining 10% being funded by the city of Southfield. Consent agenda item B is the partnership arrangement between the Miracle League of Michigan and Easter Seals. Miracle League provides adapted baseball program for special needs individuals. This arrangement will provide long-term sustainability to a new program that originated in the city of Southfield 10 years ago. Matter of fact, last Saturday, we had a 10th anniversary celebration on the Miracle Field. Easter Seals, which is located in our city, has provided services to persons with variety fiscal and developmental challenges for over 96 years. The Miracle League will be partnering with Easter Seals and the city of Southfield to provide this adapted baseball program for many years to come, under an agreement for a period from July of 2013 through September 22nd, 2023. This agreement was reviewed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, July 15th. Consent agenda item C is an award to bid emergency vehicles to -- let me state that again. Is an award to bid emergency vehicles plus of Milan, Michigan, in a low bid amount of $851,150 for replacement light support vehicles for our fire departments. This includes power stretchers, an additional safety feature for our firefighters and the public in emergency medical situations, which also saves valuable seconds in times of extreme emergency. This is optional -- this is an optimal time for the -- I'm sorry, start again. This is an optimal time for the purchase of these replacement vehicles in terms of mileage, maintenance costs, improvements offered by the newer equipment. Funds are provided for this purchase in the Equipment Revolving Fund established at the purchase. This purchase was reviewed on July 15th at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, and actually was discussed way back in March. The final two items, D and E, consent The final two items, D and E, on the consent agenda, have to do with the Southfield Employee Retirement System investments. Item D is the approval of an asset allocation model recommended by the system's investment consultants, Gray &amp; Company, with local offices in Bloomville Hills. Item E is approval of a money manager for a 5% portion of the retirement portfolio, Franklin Templeton of San Mateo, California. Both of these items were discussed in detail at the July 15th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and also have been discussed by the Council Finance Committee in June. Item C, A F, is approval of a budget adjustment to fully fund the police building security, accessibility, and efficiency improvements. This was discussed at least in two earlier meetings to improve security and efficiency in our police buildings. So with that, are there any items that a council member would like withdrawn or set aside before we move the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to enter.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve consent agenda items CAA, CAB, CAC, CAD, CAE, and CAM.
Support been moved by Mr. Frasier, supported by Ms. Jordan. All those in favor, if you can clap by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, our consent agenda is approved. All right. And moving along, we now go to public hearings, and Mr. Crowe, I'm going to turn to you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Our first public hearing is GP 1244P, amending Article IV general provisions of the zoning ordinance by deleting Section 5.58 wireless communication facilities and inserting in lieu of in Section 5.58 wireless communication facilities. This amendment specifically concerns revising the Southfield Wireless Communication Facility ordinance to meet state of Michigan requirements. This was originally postponed from June 17th, and the planning department and the city attorney's office work closely in streamlining these ordinances.
We don't have any other presentation on this board, any other comments?
No, just that we have now reworked our ordinance to be consistent in accordance with what the state law now requires.
Okay. So basically, what we're approving tonight are the changes that have been mandated by state and federal law, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I'm going to declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to address council on this topic, that is, the changes in the wireless communications ordinance of the city of Southfield, should come to the podium.
Good evening, Dr. Schneider. Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mullen. My address is Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. I would like to talk about the verbiage of GP 1244P, that is, city council's legal notice for this public hearing, and the verbiage of every ever similar legal notice and ordinance that amends the city code. Up until recently, the phrase inserting in lieu thereof was always used, and now it has been replaced with the word adding, as in this very notice. I pointed out this aberration at the co-damending public hearing for GP 1246P on February 25th. Then the very next co-damending legal notice, which was GP 1253P, was done correctly for the public hearing on March 18th. Sad to say, with this legal notice, GP 1244P, you folks have fallen off the wagon again. I don't have a 12-step program to help you folks, just an observation. Now, in fairness, this isn't really a big deal. All we're talking about here is amending the city code correctly. It isn't like we're talking about something really important, like the massive landmark legislation passed last year by this council on May 14th, a truly red-letter day for this city, that is, the awesome 552-worded fracking resolution. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address council on this item?
My name is Geraldine Amato, and you do have all my information in the record. I'd like to comment on the fact that little information is advanced. You do mention state and federal requirements at this meeting, but you do not say what they are, that this municipal government has to comply with. And I'd like to suggest again, if these are genuine public hearings for any purpose, perhaps something could be left on that bulletin board in the back, previous to these meetings, where people can review an entire bill at any time, those who do not have access to computers to look up on the internet. We have also an indication here of our top-down government, which is contrary to the principles that we supposedly were celebrating in the Fourth of July. The Fourth of July set up a republican form of government, where there was representative officials that answered to the people, and it was a people-up government. So those tables have been reversed, and we have a top-down. We have a central government in Washington, DC, that sets the standards for everybody else, and we must comply with their mandates, whether funded or unfunded. And currently, we're under a fraudulent monetary system, and we have, at the local level, as you evidenced at the beginning of this meeting, the bar association-controlled attorneys who do the bidding of their central bar association, or else they get disbarred, threatened, or worse, and are known as good attorneys that have gotten disbarred for advancing the law vis-à-vis a group of people that have other things going for themselves, like organized crime within government under the guise of law. I know this for a fact, because my family is a victim of organized crime in the Second Judicial District of New Mexico, which is Albuquerque. Wireless communication facilities are overdone in this area already. I've been here a little bit over a year. I was planning to be back for the summer in New Mexico, but I had my plans fall through because of drought and dry water wells, et cetera. But people in this area, including me, since I've been here, are overexposed to what scientists describe as non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation. And furthermore, it is said that this type of overexposure is causing physical problems, mental and emotional problems, with many folks who do not relate it to that cause, because we are kept ignorant. The marketing of these facilities and the putting up of these towers is essentially a crime against the people of this area. But since this is a top-down authority, we've got authoritarianism essentially going on, it is imposed on the locals without any information that's adequate for being aware of what's happening. These requirements are imposed upon the locals for perverse purposes. The folks in charge of this nation headquartered in Washington, DC, are not good people. That is evident by their actions. And unless the good people of this nation start insisting their agendas and questioning their requirements, we are lost as a free people. We are incrementally losing every opportunity to be free agents in a free society, and we are at the time now bowing to mercenaryism. We're happy to be, we're very mercenary, some of us are mindless mercenaries for a malabellum establishment headquartered in Washington, DC. I personally think we need an armed march on Washington to remove all those lying, thieving murderers, depraved scampols, from their authority over the good people of this nation. And yet, we keep bowing to them, kissing their feet, and doing their bidding, and calling them sir or ma'am. They are not good people, as evident by everything they do everywhere, both in this country and elsewhere. For my 15 seconds, I'd like to mention, there's a lost dog, a little elderly, what do you call it, Jack Russell terrier, the last couple of weeks. If anyone has seen him, please call 330-647-1937, 330-647-1937. An elderly Jack Russell terrier. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address council on the communication ordinance?
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. I just want to congratulate, first of all, the city attorney on her new appointment. And I'm hoping, as I briefly discussed with you, that you will be about the people, that you will be fair, and that you will not do the business of some of these elected officials that take on personal issues against people and want you to do their dirty work. And upcoming, I'll name some of those officials when I put out my naughty and nice list. I'm not sure about this zoning, but you have it on here. So I'm just going to say it remains to be seen. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Gerald. Is there anyone else who wishes to address council on the wireless communications revisions? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make the motion that we approve GP 1244, amending the our court for the trial during the public hearing.
Support been moved by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Frasier. Comments, Mr. Lambs? Yes. I, yes, the floor is yours. Okay.
Everybody sitting here do not know what this amendment is. You don't have a clue of what is happening to you. This is a public hearing for council to approve or not approve the mandate from the state or the US government about building the wireless cell phones larger, more radiation to be emitted all over the city of Southfield, and doubling the amount of radiation that will come from the cell towers being enlarged. Nobody knows, nobody is here about it. I don't know if they advertise this, but you don't know, it's about the wireless and about radiation, and all the problems that can kill you years from now. And here, no one is here to oppose it, and it's probably going to be passed, and poor people 20 years from now, or 30 years from now, will die from cancer, radiation, or whatever disease radiation does to people. I would like to have, I know it's mandated by the state, by federal government, but I believe council should start a lawsuit against that. We should not obey the mandate of killing our people with radiation, and council should postpone this public hearing and not vote on it until we get enough information again to tell the people the danger of all, of the radiation emitted, or what we're going to do, what the state and the federal government want us to do. I believe council should not vote on it tonight. They should postpone it and inform all the people what this means. I hope people understand what I'm saying. Council is going to approve or not approve, I'm sure they're going to approve, building stronger cell towers, higher cell towers and abazes which emit radiation, and you don't know about it. They're pulling something over on you, and you know what radiation does to the human body, not immediately, but in the few years to go. So I would like to ask council to postpone this decision now and get more information out to the people, because there's nobody here who understands what we're doing tonight. So council, you could listen to me, or you don't have to listen to me, you can approve it, but I would suggest you wait, inform the people of the city of Southfield what is really happening, that are going to happen to them.
Mr. Crowe, do you want to comment?
I just want to make some brief comments. This item was enacted by the state in May of 2012, 18 months ago, and in that time, we've had three council study sessions on this issue. This item has been postponed twice for further information, but in a very brief summary, and I'll defer to the city attorneys if you'd like to add anything. This is for existing cell towers that are going to be co-located, where additional tunnel will be put on existing towers that have previously been approved by the council, and the height of the existing tower is not increased more than 20 feet or 10% of the existing tower. It also allows for some additional tap network at the base, and it streamlines the process so they don't have to go through a 90-day review. Now, should there be a new cell tower, it would be required to go through our planning permission city council, like our normal standards. So this is a mandate from the state and federal government to streamline existing towers that have co-location at a certain threshold, and that's all it is. And we have had three extensive workouts, and this public hearing has been scheduled for three times.
Mr. President, may I add to that, please, or any more? May I? Yes. Okay.
We don't have the power to kill our people. The way the planner explained now, it's nothing, nothing. But the new towers that they're going to fix up will emit more radiation than they do today. Why don't we say that? Terry, why don't you tell the people, the people about the radiation emitted from the towers and the bases, which harm the people? So I would suggest again, if they vote on it tonight, they're approving a warrant, people to get sick in the near future on radiation. Let's wait, let's get some more information on it, and transmit it to the people, so they'll know what you're voting for or what they want. Ms. Amato was correct, but she still, people didn't understand what she was saying. So I'm asking council to postpone or not vote on it tonight, until we inform the people more about radiation and the towers that they're going to expand.
The public hearing is closed. Oh, it is? Yes. Closed public hearing. It's the council's portion. I'd like to turn to the city attorney, and a question this board. If someone wanted to read the current, because it hasn't been approved yet, but if they wanted to read the, it's approximately 14 pages, it is online, correct?
That's correct.
It's on our website. And Mr. Crowe has explained, these are structural changes that become part of our building code. I don't think there's probably a person in the audience who doesn't have a microwave or a cell phone. Or a wireless router. Or a wireless router, or whatever other gadget, and we have these, if we don't have the cell And we have these, if we don't have the cell towers, then obviously we don't have the devices working in our community. So...
Mr. President.
But anyhow, Ms. Ward, the floor is yours.
If I could just, I agree with what Mr. Crowe has indicated, but what happens is that the zoning enabling act that was amended last year specifically provides that these parameters now are being permitted use irrespective of what a local unit of government does. The zoning enabling act makes these conditions a permitted use. And so all we're doing now is recognizing that the state has already made them a permitted use, and we've now structured them into our work. So by doing this, you're not doing something that doesn't already exist, because state laws already said it's permitted use.
And these, as any person who comes to our building department to construct anything needs to follow the city code. And our code must be consistent with the state laws, as you said. So I, Mr. Lambs suggested we postpone this. Is there any support for that? Ms. Seymour, you're supporting that?
No.
Okay. Mr. Lambs, then I guess I need to have you put that in the form of a motion.
A motion should call to postpone this tonight, this vote tonight, until we can get enough information and transmit it to all the people in the city of Southfield of the danger of what is going to happen with the enlargement of our cell towers with radiation. And I would like to, of course, you have to, you have to have a vote on it, and it does hurt the people. It will damage your money.
And then, it's been moved and supported to postpone. Is there any discussion?
I don't think the postponement has a discussion.
I'm sorry?
I don't think we can discuss a postponement.
Under our rules, a motion to postpone, there is debate. Debate is permitted on a motion.
Okay. I thought it was just, it has to be directly associated with the value of...
Debate is permitted, but shall not go into the merits of the issue to be postponed, but only on the decision on whether to postpone.
That's right.
That's what I'm asking for. Is there anybody who wishes to say anything about the postponement? Hearing none, then I'll call a roll call vote. Ms. Banks, are you calling other people to answer if they have anything to say? We've already done the public hearing, Mr. Lambs.
Nobody knows. They have to know.
The public hearing was advertised, actually it was scheduled twice before this evening.
Who reached that and about this? No one knows what it was about.
It's on our website. But they don't know that the planning department through the process, the normal processes. Anyhow, we have a motion to postpone on the floor, and I'm asking for a roll call vote. Ms. Banks, you call the roll.
Thank you. Mr. Fracassi?
No.
Mr. Fraser?
No.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Seiber?
No.
Okay, there are two that have voted against, or two that have voted in favor, three against the motion does not.
Oh, God help the people.
All right, now we have, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the wireless communications facility ordinance.
We already have a motion.
Oh, I got sidetracked. Who made that?
I did.
Thank you.
I supported.
Thank you. Okay, then if there's no other discussion, I'll do call the roll, or rather, open to assemble. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two noes and five ayes, the motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to public hearing.
We need to introduce the...
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Mr. Fraser.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we introduce ordinance number?
1614.
I know, because I got mixed up by, 1614.
Correct.
Do I have support?
The floor.
Supported by Mr. Fracassi, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. No. Two noes. Okay, then we will move on to the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant. And I believe Ms. Williams is here tonight.
Good evening, members of council.
And before you begin, this is an annual event that you're here, we see you once a year for this, or actually more than once because you come to a study session. We had a study session on this item on June 3rd, I believe, if I remember correctly. So, good evening, once again, Ms. Williams.
Good evening. We have a short video presentation that describes the projects to be funded this year, and then after that video presentation, then the public hearing can begin. Thank you.
Okay.
The Community Development Block Grant allows Southfield to develop programs that will uniquely benefit our communities while addressing the needs of low and moderate income persons. This year, the city of Southfield begins its 39th year of C.E.G. program. Our consolidated plan's main goals are maintain suitable living environment for Southfield residents with particular attention to the senior population, improve decent housing for low and moderate income households through various housing programs, promote economic opportunities by assisting local small businesses. For the 2013-2014 program year, the city of Southfield will receive $422,900 in entitlement funds. The proposed action plan includes a modeling program. The Southfield Home Improvement Program, SHIP, offers low interest loans for specific structural repairs. Recommended amount is $59,885 in entitlement fund. Rebuilding Together will work in concert with SHIP to renovate houses due to likening volunteer labor. Recommended amount is $30,000. The Chore Program provides funding for minor home repairs for low income seniors. Recommended amount is $150,000. Code Enforcement cleans up residential and commercial debris in targeted areas. Recommended amount is $35,000. The Emergency Relief Fund provides financial assistance for basic needs to low income persons. Recommended amount is $20,000. TAWT provides needed transportation for Southfield seniors. Recommended amount is $23,435. The Southfield Youth Assistance Program provides scholarship to young people for academic and extracurricular activities. Recommended amount is $20,000. In accordance with credit guidance, the Housing Department will partner with the Fair Housing Center of Detroit to promote fair housing practices in Southfield. Recommended amount is $1,580. Program administration comprises operational costs and the salary of one staff position. Recommended amount is $83,000. Tonight, following the public hearing, city council is asked to adopt the final 2013-2014 action plan for Community Development Block Grant.
All right, Ms. Williams, does anything else?
Do you have any?
Okay, then I will declare the public hearing open on the 2013-2014 Community Development
Time is set. Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. And I wanted to acknowledge a very good friend of mine in the back, Mr. Lloyd Cruz, who's here at the meeting tonight. I don't have a problem with the totals that are on here. I know, I think it was last year, and Ms. Erica can say, the money for Haven was eliminated. Now, all we have to do is watch the news. Domestic violence is still an issue, and I'm disappointed that there's no money there. Now, we've given away a lot of tax abatements. Some of these tax-abating companies can take the money and give to a very good cause. I applaud the mayor for her cell phone drive that you had for Haven, because that's something that's needed for these women that have to flee their personal living situations due to domestic violence. So I think the city is going to be neglecting such an issue. We have that here. Don't forget the police officer from another city that lost his life. He was actually off duty. He responded to a call. It happened to be a domestic situation, and he never came home. So to sit here with these things on here and not have Haven on there, I think is sad. If you guys would stop with your free cars, your free trips, your free food, and getting expenses when you're right here in the city of Michigan, Southfield, in Detroit, the state of Michigan, I think some of that money can be given to Haven. I don't think that any of you should be applying for expenses when you're right here in the state of Michigan or right across south of Eight Mile in Detroit. Find the money, give some money to Haven, and let these people that are going through domestic violence know that you care. Haven has been very committed to the city of Southfield, committed to Oakland County, and for you guys not to have them on the list, I am really disappointed. So do something about it, and do the right thing for once.
Public hearing on Community Development Block Grant. Anyone else wishing to speak? Is that you ready, Mr. Mullen?
Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mullen. My address is Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. This city council's legal notice for this public hearing was never, never, not ever posted by this city council on this city's legal notice bulletin board. I surmise that this council's reason why this notice wasn't posted is the very same reason why this council chose not to publish this notice in the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets a copy of. That is, it appears that you folks here, the Gang of Seven, are trying to slip this one past the goalie. Or maybe it could simply be a case of collective ignorance. In a word, the Gang of Seven here is either mysteriously clever or just plain stupid. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, this notice was published in the Southfield Exeter as required.
No, we'll move on. That's Amato. Time is yours.
My name is Darlene Amato, and I agree that there's a lawful endeavors that this grant is going towards, and that there's good people involved in administering others. However, I want to say this much, that the fact that we depend upon handouts from the federales with strings attached in order to do anything at the local level is indicative of this unlawful top-down government structure. The wealth of this nation has been seized, taken away from the people. In the short term, we are having run out of confidence games. Community development block grants are confidence games. The folks that set up the problem where we don't have enough resources at the local level to conduct our business as we see fit, set up a program as a confidence game to let us know, we're helping you out, we'll always be here to help you, don't worry, you're not going to go under. And as we have noted over the years, every single program that has been set up is initially funded very well, and it seems to be doing what its claims have been set up for, and then eventually we see it eroded. I can think right off the top of my head right now, the Public Defenders Program, for example. It was well-funded at first, not now, but the prosecutor's offices are very well-funded. You ask yourself the question, who gains from, who gets the money to run business? And what favors, which programs are favored above others? The fact is, we are operating on borrowed time and borrowed money. I heard some commentator on the news broadcast talk about Detroit living on borrowed time and borrowed money with all that bankruptcy propaganda that's been going out. But they won't mention that every last one of us and every last entity, both government and non-government, are living on borrowed time and borrowed money. And the question remains, are we going to continue to play along with the rules that the African healers have set for us and do nothing to resist it until they get ready to pull the rug out totally from under us? Or are we going to resist them before they make their last move? If you remember, some of you are old enough to remember the song by Tennessee Ernie Ford, "I owe my soul to the company store." That company town is indicative or an example of where we're at today as a nation. We're in a company town, we shop at the company stores, and we use company script, which is faxed or credit script. It is not backed by substance, it's not lawful money. There's mention in the federal constitution about money, but lawful money, but it's not what we're working with. We're using Federal Reserve banks for credit script in this country, and every major country is controlled by a central bank which are all linked together in the world arena. This is the global economy that we've been suffered into, why Detroit has had some setbacks, but there's wealth in Detroit, and more that privatization of that wealth comes to pass, and people at the lowest level of economic ladder are deprived of their way of earning a living. There is a war strategy, deprive the enemy of its property so it cannot prosecute a rebellion. The good people of this nation are considered the enemy of the New World Orderists, and they talk community all the time, many of the programs that are administered at the local level, that has nothing to do with genuine community where we are in contact with one another. We have a mass manipulations, deceptions, corruptions media, used to be called communications media. We don't communicate with each other through that medium. It's controlled by the same people who control the wealth of this nation. There's a lean on everyone's labor in this nation today. We are allowed to possess some material things and real estate and stuff like that, risk it in our hands and so forth. We own none of it. And when the masses get ready to separate us from what we think we own, we will have nothing to resist them with. When you're living a hand-to-mouth existence where many people are already relegated to in other nations that have been invaded by these same people, you have nothing to resist them with. They say, you want to eat today? Shut up and do as you're told. And we're heading in that direction unless there's enough good people willing to make a move. a move and help there. Any questions?
Anybody else wishing to address the council on Community Development Block Grants for 2013, 14? I've come to go to the floor, please. Seeing none, I declare the, uh, public hearing closed. I'd like to comment that, um, this year, we were, the city of Southfield was afforded $422,900 in, uh, Community Development Block Grant funds. This is a slight bump from last year at $415,000. But 10 years ago, um, our Community Development, um, Block Grant funds were $250,000 more. And when we had more money, we supported more, uh, agencies like Haven. We don't have the money any longer, and that is, these are, this is an allocation of federal funds, uh, not, not, um, Southfield tax, uh, federal dollars. Uh, council, any, um, comment or emotion?
I think a motion that we approve, 2013, 2014.
All right, uh, we have a motion by Ms. Jordan, uh, supported by Mr. Ficassi, to approve the Community Development Block Grants for the coming year. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to, to state that, uh, you know, almost all the funds that we approved this evening, or intended to approve, haven't spent on seniors or our youth, and, um, I think those are very important to this community, and, uh, we have really looked into each and every request, uh, to see if we could address their needs. However, uh, the need to the seniors was primary to us as well as our youth, and that's how the funds were, were spread out. Hopefully, we'll be able to receive more dollars in the future, but, you know, looking back, Mr. President, as you have stated, you can almost see where we are almost $200,000 more money coming into the city, uh, and it just kept diminishing each and every year. Uh, and, and hopefully, the, the federal government will look at the needs in their urban centers, their first-tier communities, to address the needs and give us some more allocations. Thank you.
I would echo that, that we've seen, um, some really significant declines at the, and state federal funds, not just in Southfield, but to all local governments. Uh, any other comment, um, please, uh, Mr. Prager?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo some of the comments that, uh, Mr. Ficassi said, but, especially as the, the funds that we have allocated so far, uh, are, uh, mostly directed towards seniors, and that, seniors, the senior population is the fastest-growing group that we have, and, uh, a lot of this is, uh, to help seniors be able to stay in their own homes, and, uh, it's more and more difficult for seniors to stay in their own homes now, especially as our transportation is so spotty. You see the, uh, the folks that are standing at the bus, at the bus stops to, uh, wait for the, the buses to come along. A lot of those are, are seniors, and I, you know, I just feel a passion that, uh, it's too bad that we don't have a better, uh, transportation system, but what we're trying to do with the limited funds that we get is make it as easy as possible for our seniors to, uh, be functional for as long as they possibly can, and it is getting more and more difficult as the, uh, funds, uh, keep being reduced. So, I think we're doing the best that we can with the population that, that really needs assistance. Thank you.
What's more, can I ask you one?
Yeah, I'll add on to some of the things that my colleagues have said, um, and include that, you know, this is, we're struggling with the money that's still needed from federal government and trying to make sure that it goes to the area of most need. One thing that I think that we have done and can continue to improve upon is initiating public-private partnerships. With respect to Haven, I don't think anyone here disagrees that, you know, we would like to support community programs that support our residents, um, but earlier this year, we did welcome Intelman, uh, to our community, and one of the things that was part of their mission, mission, um, in, in supporting the community, um, supporting community programs, and to the community programs, they mentioned that they do provide support to, uh, include the Boys and Girls Club and to Haven. Um, so, when we initiate these public-private partnerships, we're able to, we're able to, uh, supplement, uh, some of the things that we aren't able to do with federal dollars. Uh, I think that we, as the council, should also check in with our Southfield Community Foundation. I think that would be a good, uh, a good meeting to have with them to make sure that, you know, they, they can be our ambassadors to help initiate, to help, uh, to help, uh, give enthusiastic support to some of these public-private partnerships, so I, I think that's worthy of putting on the agenda in the future.
Okay, does she want?
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Uh, I just want to address the issue of, um, of Haven, because in the past, we have always contributed to Haven, but, uh, this is not just a council decision, this goes through a very detailed review by our staff that studies how many people are served in the community by these different programs. And what we found with many of the communities that Haven serves was very few of our own people were involved in, in, uh, using that program. So, we have to look at where the greatest need is, as others have said on council this evening, um, you have to make hard decisions, and the people that were most, that we were most able to help with the few funds that we had were the senior population. Um, and, you know, more people in other communities were, were being served by Haven, so, um, you have to make tough choices, and we can't always do everything that we want to do, but, um, hopefully, in the future, we'll, um, things will pick up and we'll be able to do more with what we have. But this, this was not an easy decision, and it was one that was reviewed by many, many departments. It's not something that we do lightly, um, and I think we made the right choices, how well they were.
Mayor Martin?
I have a question to administration. The revolving fund, we have had discussions, um, about the amount of money that's being returned after we make the initial investment. I see it's zero there, so are we saying that we will not have any dollars to loan for, um, the Southfield Home Improvement Program?
Thank you, the Chair. Uh, what we're saying is, we're not counting on that money. Our, the payback to loans has decreased significantly over the last five years, and because of the way that the formula is set up, uh, HUD wants us, when we say we're going to get that money, they're counting that we have that money. So, we have said, "No, we're not getting any," and anything that we get is on the plus side, but to, um, to estimate, uh, we've gotten very little in the past.
So, what population is served by the Home Improvement, uh, program? Uh, seniors or low income?
Low income and seniors. Many of the, um, many of the, the clients do happen to be seniors, but they, as long as they meet that low income, it could be families as well.
So, um, how much money do we have outstanding that needs to be collected?
Outstanding, there, the majority of those loans are deferred loans, so they don't actually, uh, we don't count them as, as payable until they sell the home, uh, until they sell or refinance the home. But the, the amount of loans that we have out there that could come back at any time is right around $400,000.
Wow.
But the, but the people would have to either refinance or sell.
I thought the loans based on need, and there was like a period of time, a 20-year prom, 20-year loan, so you pay an interest and you can pay off early, so I wasn't aware that loans were being given, and there was no expectation of a home loan?
Initially, when we started this program, there was more actually installment loans in that 20-year period, but, uh, within the, I'd say, within the last 10 years, people were not able to make those monthly payments, so we didn't, the majority of them were deferred loans.
So, now, with, so for the seniors or the low income, the chore program is the only thing we have to offer?
Well, no, we still have the, the Southfield Home Improvement Program. What we're saying is that the revolving loan fund, to count those funds of people paying back, we can't count on that, so we're counting on the entitlement funds, but, but we're still going forward with the Southfield Home Improvement Program and the chore program.
So, this makes me understand, so if we have zero dollars, and I call you tomorrow, and I need the profile, and low income, or I'm senior, how much, how do you, if you're claiming zero, how, how do I give value to the program?
Well, let me remind you that with the Southfield Home Improvement Program, there were two funding sources. The entitlement funds are what we received directly from the federal dollars. Our revolving was the payback from the loans, so we have entitlement funds from the last five years to fund the ship program.
And how much is that?
Uh, I think it's over $400,000. So, it's, it's from the different, uh, from the different years. So, last year, we get, uh, what was it, the $18,0087, uh, the year before, $92,814, we still have that. Uh, the year before that was the $55,000/67, so when you calculate those up, it's, it's over $400,000 that we have toward with.
Your emergency relief fund, the $20,000, we have a discussion about that. Uh, that is absorbed very quickly. Uh, what is our criteria that I'm signing down? How do, how do I become eligible to receive funding from you?
Well, for the emergency relief fund, that's for people that are in a crisis mode. So, we're trying to, um, stay away evictions and, uh, utility cutoffs, and on, on some cases, we can give food or gas vouchers, uh, but the majority is for, uh, rent and, um, utility shut-offs to prevent those. And the way that it works is, a person would call the Human Services Department if they can, uh, if they can show that this is a, a one-time emergency and that they need a little bit of help with this month, but in the future months, they're gonna be okay, then we want them to coordinate with other sources. So, we don't give them the whole amount, but we're giving them, uh, I think it's a maximum of like 350, and once either rent is 850, they're gonna have to go to the different sources to, to, uh, get that total amount. And, and our Human Services, uh, social worker works with them to get that amount, so that we're contributing some, but not all.
Okay. I just, I just want to say, too, um, this money, and as we look at Congress, this money has continuously been reduced. There's a discussion now, uh, when we were at the US Congress, the mayors, um, this year, there's talk about cutting it by 50 percent, and if, if that does pass, which I'm, I'm pretty sure it won't be that crazy, but there's a proposal to cut it by 50 percent, you just might as well have a community block grant kind. But, you know, it's, it's very important that we let our Congress members know when, when we talk to them about what's working in, in, um, in Washington, in funding of the community block grant, and extremely every city has used this fund and used it to help, um, members of our community. Unfortunately, the economic crisis, the need has been tremendous, and the funds have been cut, so, um, we need to, anytime you talk to your Congressperson, let them know that the community block grant, it really does fill a hole. And I have to agree with, um, Ms., um, um, that, um, this is a program that worked very well, uh, and every year, they're cutting one more of it out, so we have to use our voices and not to continue to eliminate things, but make sure we use our voice to let the federal, um, entities know that this does serve our community. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Jordan, what?
Yes, I was going to say, it's just, um, a little bit unfortunate that over the years, we've had a decrease in the amount of funds that we receive from the community block grant program, but what's really key, I think, this year is that we've really dealt with the core needs of the city, and many of those being coenforcement, and that is really, really important to the city, and, uh, speaking now to those that are watching, we're really, this council and the city is really committed to making sure that our city, city looks clean, sharp, vibrant, and giving attention to the neighborhood, so we need everybody to chip in and to do their part, keeping our city looking good, but I think we've crafted the double scoop, we see it very well, and I look forward to seeing everything, uh, crafted, thank you.
So, as you've heard, um, what money we have, um, is going towards neighborhoods, uh, the elderly, uh, and our youth. Uh, so I think we're ready at this point then to take a vote on approving this, uh, so that, um, Ms. Williams can administer the program for another 12 months. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Uh, motion carries. Ms. Williams?
Thank you.
All right, thanks for moving on to our third final public hearing of the evening, and this is, um, GP 1258, and it's a special use request of Carlo Horn, Bootcamp, Michigan. Uh, Mr. Prode, I'm gonna turn the floor for you.
Thank you. Through the chair again. Our final public hearing is GP 1258, the special use request of Carlo Horn, Bootcamp, Michigan LLC, on behalf of the owner, Thomas Straight, to use approximately 2,960 gross square feet of an existing building located at 24151 Telegraph Road for a brief fitness program. The property is located on the west side of Telegraph Road between West Ten Mile Road and Garner Street. I have a brief video presentation.
The property is located on the west side of Telegraph Road between Ten Mile Road and Garner Street in Section 29 of the city. The subject property, as well as the properties to the north, west, south, and east across Telegraph Road, resumes outdoor industrial. With regard to the existing land use, the subject property, as well as the properties to the north and west, are developed with industrial buildings, housing office, industrial uses, and warehousing. The properties to the east across Telegraph Road are developed with public storage and a vacant building. The site contains .86 acres of land with 110.82 feet of firmage on Telegraph Road and a depth ranging from 334 feet to 342 feet. The special use request proposes to use 2,962 gross square feet of the existing building for a fitness program. The parking required for all uses on the property and adjacent properties is 132 spaces with 133 provided. The parking required for the fitness use is 12 spaces with 12 spaces provided. The land be provided according to ordinance requirements. The special use request is to permit a non-industrial use or a use not related to manufacturing within the I-1 industrial zoning district. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use work, the special use review standards of the zoning ordinance. This proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, noting to analogy corridor sub-areas for the parcels. The petition is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Prime Prevention Bureau regarding the site's security.
Through the chair, the, uh, application was received by the planning department on April 26th. The planning commission held a public hearing on June 19th, made a favorable recommendation. Both the applicant and the owner are here to make brief comments before the public hearing is opened, and I would invite them to come to the podium.
Gentlemen, uh, state your name and business address for the record.
My name is, uh, Thomas W. Straight, P.E. My business address is 24221 Telegraph Road in Southfield, Michigan, 48033, I am the owner.
Good evening. Carlo Horn, 5775 Rosen.
Carlo Horn, five seven seven five, Losins three, Wayne, Michigan, four eight one eight four, seven three four nine six three five four five four.
We think it's not bad.
Uh, I think the presentation covered it fairly well. I think we're fully compliant with what we're trying to do. I'm here basically to answer any questions any of you guys might have, um, with regard to what we're trying to do.
All right, we're going to have a, my friend.
Before we go to the public hearing, I've, I've asked Mr. Horn just to give a brief overview of the program, hours of operation and so forth, uh, before we go to the public hearing.
It's kind of, it's kind of hard to explain. I, I didn't know nothing about this as far as, like, I had to come before you all, otherwise I would have brought a DVD or whatever. Um, the only thing I can say about myself and the company itself is that, um, our last big event that we had was with the UAW at the gym headquarters in Detroit. Um, I believe in day two that, as, as it stands right now, currently, I am the top trainer in Michigan. The product that we do have is totally different than any other product that's out there as far as exercise, the Planet Fitnesses and other gyms. Um, over thirty of the top companies and trainers in Michigan went for this position. Um, they all know who I am. They know Boot Camp Michigan. I've been trying to get out of Southfield for...
Four years.
Four years. And, um, four years ago, I was actually with this guy. And then my realtor brought me back to this guy. And so it was like, let's do it again. So basically, um, we run a program. Three days a week, you train. You're probably there for twenty, twenty-five minutes. The results that we get from our program, if you look at any infomercial where people are training five, six days out of the week, we get better results, you know? And that's another reason why the gym has picked us. Um, doesn't make a difference on the age. No one is claiming we have seventy-four, um, all the way to eight years old. The injuries, we work around the injuries. We actually rehab them. Um, I was going to school to be a physical therapist, couldn't afford it, so I started running boot camps. And I've been a trainer for twenty years. So I used it by means of my way to be a physical therapist that actually, I figured I could open up shop anywhere. That way I can still do what I wanted to do. But, um, enough about me. What do you guys?
We're going to have a, um, public hearing, and then the council will have questions for you. But our protocol is to be a public hearing person. So we appreciate the introduction, um, and Mr. Horn will get back to you. Um, at this point, I will declare the public hearing open on GP twelve fifty-eight, the special use request, uh, for, um, a, uh, for a gym at twenty-four one fifty-one Telegraph Road. Um, yes, ma'am.
Just want to wait till you get the timer set. Are you all set?
I'll set.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eighty. And I want to help out Mr. Carlo Horn. Um, he doesn't have weightlifting machines. As he mentioned, General Motors sought him out and obviously now people in the United States are trying to do what the First Lady of the United States says, and that's to fight obesity. Um, and you don't always have to work on machines to fight obesity. I think probably the UAW contracted him is because people now need to be into preventing obesity and preventing health conditions as opposed to treating them after they happen. Um, and he's got two other trainers with him. Um, I think it's good that he wanted to pursue, um, the city of Southfield. Um, and the location appears to be good. Now, we give out a lot of tax abatements. Um, I want to say to Mr. Horn and Mr. Straight, maybe this facility or being in that zone may qualify for a tax abatement. After all, we are in the business of doing business in the city of Southfield, and we love to give out a good tax abatement, so you might come for that opportunity. Um, I want, um, this company coming in to keep the facility up. I want you to be about landscaping because we want to make the city and the location look very nice. I want the company to be, uh, community oriented, to keep a very professional atmosphere. And it's very, very important that you adhere to the recommendations made by our crime prevention officers for the city of Southfield. I think the session is a hundred and forty-nine dollars for twelve session classes. Could be twenty to thirty people or larger. So this seems like a good thing. I'm in support of it as long as you pay attention to the things that I've mentioned about the atmosphere and professionalism, but more importantly, take the crime prevention's recommendations. So I support it. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the public hearing on the special use request? Anytime you're ready, Mr. Jordan.
Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mole. My address is Post Office, Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. This city council's legal notice for this public hearing, GP twelve fifty-eight, is improperly written. The controlling authority for a council's notice is Public Act one ten of two thousand six. I'd like to read to you from the act, section one oh three, subsection four A. Quote, "Describe the nature of the request." Unquote. Council's notice fails that criterion. Instead, council's notice states that this is a special use request, but in chapter forty-five, there are thirteen different types of special use requests. Which one of the thirteen requests are we talking about here tonight? Council's notice fails to specify which one of the thirteen. Therefore, council's notice must be considered improperly written since it doesn't describe the true nature of this request as mandated by state law. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address, um, the council?
Good evening. Under the current private commercial order, every business that we have to do with one another is set up just like this as a business. This discussion reminds me a bit of that indoor playground at, uh, Northland Mall. I don't see that, you know, it changes anything about the dynamics of authority over government in this area. It's just someone trying to make a living within the structure that exists without actually changing anything. So it's no real, uh, hindrance to the master plan, which is set up by the masters who don't live in this community and has nothing to do with the real life community. Fitness is being contradicted, you can do your exercise, your physical exercise, by what we talked about earlier, an overabundance of wireless communication towers, um, air pollution, as noted in the biochem trails in the skies that are never discussed publicly anywhere. We have all chemical additives in the food. This was once a farming community. I understand this complex was a Thompson farm, and she donated it to the city. Uh, perhaps she would be, uh, rolling around in her grave noticing what has been done to it. Couple of towers on here, I noticed as well. One right by a playground. I don't think that's very good for your vitality to be playing ball right by a communications, uh, facility tower. We have, I remember a biblical reference to tearing down the towers in the Hebrew scriptures. I don't know what kind of tarot they were talking about, but I think if we really wanted to keep fit, that would one of the first things we'd do, instead of adding more. And we would return our exercise back to doing things in the natural world rather than having synthetic playgrounds and fitness arenas or whatever you call them. Feed the exercise in indoors with machines, et cetera. There's plenty of exercise that's good for the human vitality in the farm, farming industry. I shouldn't call it industry, the smaller family farms. If we would grow our own food in this area, which is suitable for growing food, instead of poisoning, uh, the lawns and so forth with chemicals that are polluting the waterways as well as the air and the environment, we could return to nature. These master plans are those plans that take us further and further away from the natural world. The human being is a natural creation, belongs within nature, not separated incrementally from every natural contact. These cell phones should be thrown away into the trash rather than marketed and advanced. We wouldn't have all this domestic violence that women would use cell phones for if we had genuine community. We have an unlawful court network that's disposed, disposedly, um, what's the word? Or mediates conflicts between us. And what they actually do is subject us to more abuse, and that I have testimony about. So if you want, for the short term, if you want to live in American dream world, we do fitness inside a gym and think we're healthy. There's so many things affecting our vitality, the way we think. We should really be thinking of resisting what's happening in this country before we all lose our minds because a lot of this electronic technology is affecting our brains and our minds. And the youngsters coming up using these cell phones, as is said by the researchers that are not mainline or mainstreams, that it's tendency to rewire the development of a child's mind to use a cell phone. And we don't know until ten or twenty years from now, and then maybe epidemics related to it, what these instruments of diabolical ingenuity will do to people and what their final results are. But I'll tell you what, the marketers of them and the manufacturers of them know exactly what they're doing. It's a form of black magic to change the character of a nation so that we will be easier to control. And so long as we continue to bow to everything that is sold us and every business that we should engage in, without any question, more of us are going to have to consider getting to the business of breaking out of American consumer dream world. We are under a private commercial jurisdiction. The authority of the people is lost, and we do not have any genuine connection with one another, only with the business model. And we need to connect one with one another. And good night, or I'll be back later.
Anyone else who wishes to address?
Yes, good evening. My name is Gal Masie. I'm West Ten Mile. I believe the clerk's office has my street address. I'm the president of the Open Village Civic Association, so I'm up here to actually address the issue. Um, this backs up to Kinsel Street, which is part of our association. And, um, Yolanda Haynes, who you've all seen, went to one of the meetings and, you know, we have no, it doesn't appear that this would negatively impact anyone, uh, in, in connection with our association. I do have one concern and a question though, because when I got, I did get a notice for the public hearings and, and the study sessions for the planning commission, which was, I was pleased to do. But when I drove past to see exactly where this was, the boot camp sign was already up in early June. So I'm just sort of trying to figure out what the sequence of events was here and whether it's actually already operating.
I'll try to get you an answer to that. Anyone else who wishes to address, um, the council? Come on up, sir.
Hi, I'm Bob Molek. I live on Kinsel Street, right behind Mr. Straight's office building and where they want to, uh, do the gym for kids. Uh, I've dealt with town for, let's see, I've lived in Southfield for thirty-six years. So I've dealt with Mr. Straight many times. I have no problem, and I think what he wants to do there is no problem at all. And, uh, like I said, my property backs up to his. I have no problem with, uh, what they want to do there. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call, anyone who wants, which is to address the council on this special use permit. Seeing that, I'm going to declare the, uh, public hearing closed. And, uh, I know there's some council questions, Mr. Moss.
Yeah, I think the mission was very well explained. I'm just curious about the day-to-day operations. And I think there was a mention in the, in the notes that we had from the planning commission about the hours of operation, and you were trying to figure out what you were going to do on the weekends. So just kind of the day-to-day, and perhaps does it extend to weekends as well?
Um, it'll be Monday. As of now, it'll be Monday through Friday, five-thirty to seven-thirty. Um, once it starts picking up, we'll have five-thirty in the morning classes, which will be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and then Saturday at ten AM to eleven.
Okay.
So it's not that many hours.
And you're currently not operating?
No, no. Only in the mornings.
Absolutely. Uh, other council members? Yes, Mr. Seymour.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Um, it was mentioned by the speaker, Ms. Masie, that the sign was already up before anyone apparently was aware of this. And that's what, uh, brought it to the city's attention. And I understand someone, don't know who, but someone didn't understand that a permit was needed to proceed with this. Is that correct?
The way I'd answer that is the, um, the need for special use is a little surprise to me. So we're happy to go through the process, and this is the right way to go. That's what we want to do. The sign went up, um, kind of, like, almost accommodated errors because at the time, I was dealing with Carlo, uh, I had to do some maintenance on the signs. Two's were out there. The sign checker doesn't like when half the signs went, so I took it down. And I said, "Look, your stuff may get your, you know, get everything all set, and if it's done by the time the signs fix, we'll throw it back up." With, uh, I've much forethought for that, but we can make sure that all the permits and everything are in place.
So it was just that it was special use that you weren't aware of, but you did know that you needed a permit to do that, that work? I mean, I presume everything is in order. It wouldn't be before the council tonight. Is that right, Mr. Crowe?
That's correct. Um, early on, we met with Mr. Straight to explain what the special use process is, and he immediately complied with our requirements.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, I have a few questions, and I'm not sure if I missed the hours of operation.
Uh, that'd be Monday through Friday, five-thirty PM to six-thirty PM. Well, five-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM. And then Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, five-thirty AM to six-thirty AM, followed by Saturday, ten AM. But that won't be till at least a few months from now, at least.
So, so what, help me out. What makes your Boot Camp significant? Because Mayor and I, Mayor Lawrence and I, we're going to join, so.
Um... Basically, it's... It, it's, it really is kind of hard to explain. Um, you would actually have to go to the website at bootcampmichigan.com. Uh, look under the test form. You can actually YouTube it, Google us. But, um, it really is like manual labor. Um, it's fun. Um, it's a new way of training. I, you can't really explain it. The gyms these days are just boring. Doesn't make a difference on the price. It could be ten dollars, twenty dollars, it's five dollars. People go in there, and just like anything would help. You start it, you quit it.
But I've seen the boot camps, like, the one in rural, because, you know, we're just trying to...
Yeah, yeah.
Are you comparing that or what makes this one different?
Yeah, you can't even compare it to them. It's just a term now.
Right.
I'm trying to figure out how to change the name. But it's, uh, that's just a, it's just a name now. Um, they all know who I am, uh, what I'm capable of doing. Um, I just wanted to get into the county. It started out with Southfield, but then I almost went to Birmingham. And then, um... And then I had to regroup because that's when I think the.
Recession.
Yeah, yeah, I had a recession, but.
Okay, I think you're going to be in an area that's going to greatly impact the neighborhood and the surrounding neighbors. So I'm definitely in favor of your, and we'll get Joan Seymour, Councilman Seymour, to jump up.
Any other, Mr. Fraser?
I haven't, I have a.
You got any other thoughts?
In the notes, the person from the fire prevention made a comment that there's only one exit door for a two-story building that's accessible to the occupants. And there may be another exit wired. And I didn't see any other notes that addressed that. Can you tell me where we're at on that?
Yes, I can answer that explicitly. According to Michigan Building Code, I'm specifically referring to Table 1004.1, exercise rooms require 50 square feet per person. The exercise room itself within the suite is 2,011 feet, which would mandate occupancy of 40 people. Per Michigan Building Code, Section 303.1, exception one, an assembly area with an occupant load of less than 50 people shall be classified as use group B. Per Table 1015.1, use group B spaces with an occupancy of 49 or less may be served with one exit. Now, having said that, there is one front door to the suite. It leads to two exits from the building via different routes, except for the first six feet. What I did not put in any of this, but is a true fact, there is actually a back door with an emergency crash bar, but it goes through another tenancy to get to the outside. And I didn't want to count that as an official thing because we qualify per the building code without it. But there is a second way out.
Yeah, I was under the impression that you can't go through another room to get out.
You can't, you can't count that.
Yeah.
But we are actually within the requirements of the building code without it because the space is so small.
Okay. I just read through the notes and I didn't see any other comment that addressed that issue. And I just want to make sure that. And my question is, who are your customers? You know, when I hear boot camp, I hear, you know, what goes through my mind is the old, the old boot camp nomenclature of folks that have been, run a follow-up law.
I'm working on changing the name. But the boot camp is, you know, everybody is a little nervous because of that name. But during the time when I added, you know, Boot Camp Michigan, and you have other names out there trying to put the name on it, Michigan, everywhere now. But at the time, it was good. But the people that actually join our program are anywhere from 25. The average is like 60. And you usually get, every now and then, someone to bring their parents and say they need to do this. And what it really does is it works the body the way your body should be worked, unlike a machine. You know, when you're a machine, you're fixated. You're only in these planes. And no matter how strong you are, because I also train athletes. In fact, I have two top athletes, the top UFC fighter in Michigan, Dorian Fusheng, and the number one boxer in the world, Adonis Stevenson, at 168 pounds. But this is, this type of workout actually is for everybody, athletes, anybody. To the degree of the load that I put on the person, that's the difference. So if someone first comes to me, like I have my, my mother comes in. She's 72 years old. She has a back issue. Now she's able to, we notice that the courage in her spine is actually now coming more erect. She's much faster, less winded, and she's, of course, much stronger. But it takes a little bit of time. And usually, it takes about, for the average person, three to six months before you really start seeing a big difference. I mean, you're talking about three times a week for 20 minutes compared to people training five or six days, or hour and a half at a gym. It's like a waste of time. And they're not even getting any results. The underlying thing that I'm not telling you is that the nutrition part is totally different than everybody else's. I have the most carbs. I have the most fats. I have the less protein. But yet, my results are much better.
Okay, now you can sign me up.
I get similar, I've been on, I've actually been actually living in Kyleville because I used to be in Kelly and Company, Amir Makegson. That was before your time, Moss. Susan Waggon from Channel 5 News, 40 things. It works, it works.
I know.
But outside of the boot camp itself, the nutrition part is very much superior in itself, just like the training is. Everything is natural. Everything is pretty much organic. A person can't afford it. I sit down with them and tell them, this is what you can spend $400 based on your budget. Not saying that the price, you know, the $149 a month is for everybody. And I'll be able to dictate that based on the person. I'm pretty good, I'm pretty good at determining if a person is serious or they're not despite watching them, listening to them talk or whatever. But some people do get some perks based on what's going on in their situation.
Mr. Fracetti?
Yeah, can you answer the questions?
Yeah, anyone else? I have, I have one question for you. So you're telling me that if I came to you for 20 minutes a day, three days that we, I could end up looking like you?
Good question, that was a good question.
Maybe 20 pounds less. But no, yeah, you will, you know, men are, men are pretty easy. Women is the hardest. We, we have testosterone, so I'll show you ways of increasing it naturally. The reason why I put, if you look at the website, more women than men is because they have the issue. And so I play off that. So if you look at even the infomercials, they always show men. They don't show many women at all. And that makes things, people think like, you know, if he can do it, I can do it. That's, that's not true. I'm making a book right now. There's a lot, there's a lot going on, but I've always wanted to be in open county.
Right.
Well.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve GP 1258. Seriously, for special use for the car.
Right, it's been moved by Ms. Jordan and supported by Mr. Moss. Any other discussion? No.
When you said that, and I think I heard you correctly, when you said that the exercise is more like manual labor than the normal gyms that you, and you're considering changing your name, maybe you ought to change it to like something from years ago where people had to do, do manual labor. That would.
And that's a good.
Or for Vista, the scheme of what you're doing.
Right. Like some of the exercise that we do is like, I'll give you an example. We do sledgehammers. Everybody knows about the sledgehammer hitting tires and stuff of that nature. But with the people that can't lift a sledgehammer or know the proper technique, we have little rods that are weighed in different, various movements. The main thing you must understand about how the human body works is that. And also, the reason why I'm making this book is even for physical therapists. Because when you're in the trenches, sometimes science don't work. It does not work. But when you're in the trenches and I see things, you know, I've had so many people, you know, that have trained, and it's just like a doctor. You know, the reason why these doctors are so good is because they're in the trenches. Not the fact that they're, you know, this guy's a brainiac or whatever. He's in the trenches, so therefore he's going to try things. And that's what makes him good. Everybody else had the opportunity to be the same. The body must move, that's all I have to say. And various movements and parts, different angles, different plateaus. But if you don't do that, that's where injury occurs. Lifting weights, doing machine work gets the body out of balance. Therefore, you will have core issue. Everything is core. I guess your stomach, I guess your lower back, but also your boobs, your butt. That is the most important. The glutes are, that's what my book is really going into, of how I found when people have slight nerve issues, lower back issues, is because we sit all the time. You've even, you've even seen Moss, your family, your mom and dad, probably used to have a nice round butt, but now it's flat because I've played through the sit. Well, that muscle actually supports the lower back. And once you activate that, a lot of my issues that I have in my clients subside. So everything must be in unity. Everything must be in unity.
All right, I think we're ready to vote. You got to get up and vote. Yes. 5:30, great. Lance, are we going to reset the vote? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries, good luck to you. We can go to your website and sign up, right?
Uh, yes.
All right, we go on next to a gentleman who's been patiently waiting to bring improvement to Southfield Road. So we have a site plan request. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crowe. This is not a public hearing. This is simply a site plan before council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Site Plan 1303, the Site Plan Review Request of Ahmad Potres, Futuristic Design Consultant, on behalf of the owner, George Abro, to construct a 718-gro square foot addition to the existing Cracker Barrel Liquor Store located at 30203 Southfield Road, on the west side of Southfield Road between Webster and West 13 Mile Road, immediately north of McDonald's. I have a brief video presentation.
S P 1303, the Site Plan Review Request of Ahmad Potres, Futuristic Design Consultant, on behalf of the owner, George Abro, to construct a building addition to the existing Cracker Barrel Liquor Store located at 30203 Southfield Road, on the west side of Southfield Road between Webster and 13 Mile Road in Section 11 of the city. The subject property, as well as the property to the south, is owned V3 general business. The property to the north and west is owned O S office service. And the property to the east across Southfield Road is owned R M multiple family low rise. With regard to existing land use, the subject property is developed with the Cracker Barrel Liquor Store. The property to the north and west is developed with a Cranbrook Center office building. The property to the south is developed with McDonald's restaurant. And the property to the east across Southfield Road is developed with a Ballmaral quote condominium. The site contains .53 acres of land with 82.5 feet of frontage on Southfield Road and a depth of 279.7 feet. The submitted site plan reflects the construction of a 718-gro square foot addition to the existing Cracker Barrel Liquor Store. The parking required is 20 spaces with 26 provided on site. The landscape provided conforms to ordinance requirements. The elevations reflect a mix of decorative stone, metal, and glass. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were the site plan review standards of the zoning ordinance. This proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting north of Southfield Road subarea for this parcel. The addition is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department and Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
Through the chair, the application was received by the planning department on April 26, 2013. Planning commission held a public hearing and made a favorable recommendation on June 19. The item also went to the council site plan committee on July 15. At that time, the applicant submitted or discussed revised building elevations with a 45-degree angle due to the internal layout of the coolers and other equipment inside. The revised drawing, which is slightly different from what was shown in the video, is presented before you. And council received updated site plans in your package as of Friday. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant.
Sir, if I could have your name and his business address for the record?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. President, council member. My name is Ahmad Potres, who is a futuristic design consultant. And I'm here on behalf of the owner, George Abro. He's the new owner for that store. He just bought the site four or five months ago. And he tried to enhance the existing building, improve the elevation, and get better business out of that. And as we presented from the first meeting, we did a lot of improvements to the site itself, to the building, to the facade, if you compare it to the existing building. The owner decided just to have that angled, I mean entrance. It's the same concept, I mean, as presented before, it's the same concept of having a nice stone facade with these features. But the entrance moved to the angle. He had some, I mean, his concerns were like, he gets all the customers to come park and get closer to the entrance. And probably, from his point of view, it's such how it looks better for him and it's better for the movement layout inside the store. And that's what we're proposing and we're seeking your approval. And I'm here for any questions.
All right, council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would make a motion, this has gone to the site plan committee. And he had a door that was, Chairman Lance and Mr. Fraser were there. And he had a door that was out front facing east. And our suggestion was to move it to the corner so that his parking customers could go from both sides. That is a new drawing, and I think it's turned out really nice. I'd be in favor of that.
Support, is that a motion?
Yes, I have a motion by Mr. Fracetti, supported by Ms. Jordan. I think Ms. Seymour would like to speak.
Thank you. I can't visualize what's there now. So that was shown, no, I can't. I mean, I know the area, but I don't recall that building. So I've got to go up there and look at it. But you've changed the entrance to an angle, is that correct?
Yes.
So was, it was facing Southfield Road before?
No, it was.
Facing the other way? All right, so people couldn't see it.
Yes.
So where is the area that you're building the addition? Is it on this side?
Absolutely whatever.
You're filling, you're filling that area? All of that?
Yes.
Because when I'm, when I'm looking on the, on the drawing that I have, it looks like it's just that strip, it wasn't outside strip.
It's like an L shape.
Okay, okay, I got it.
Almost exact. That's a whole probably, this all we're doing, like putting the walls and making this.
Okay, I, all right. Yeah, that's right, that's a little strip. Okay, okay. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The, it says the east and south sides of the building will be completely redone in stone and effus, is that correct?
Right.
And is that going to be painted?
No, it will have its own texture.
Natural?
Yeah, natural.
It'll be natural?
Yes.
None of it will, no brick will be painted, nothing will be painted?
No.
Okay. I guess, I, I guess that's all, that's all I, uh, I mean, there was, there was a, there was some confusion in this, in the Site Plan Committee, and I guess the, the members aren't here, but, um, oh, now I see, the front end were at a forty-five degree angle, now I see what you're talking about. Um, this and that, Mr. Spence, Planner Spence, and this and that have been discussed prior to the Site Plan Committee meeting, and he was just learning about the change. And, and you've said that this, because of how the interior layout is being proposed, that the plan before the committee wasn't going to work as efficiently, so putting this at the angle, I see what you think, was more efficient. Um, and this, did, I, Mr. Um, to the planners, did they provide these changes and drawings at, at the proper time?
Yes, that was in your package.
Yes, it was in the package.
But, but it says, sure, they prepared in the regular council meeting in two weeks, so they prepared, they did prepare.
Yes, they did.
All right, that's all, I don't have anything else.
Back to you, Ms. Jordan.
Yes, I have to say, this is a dr- drastic improvement, uh, from the previous owner. Uh, it really complements, uh, not only that building, but the surrounding businesses, the, the New McDonald's, the Target, the, the stores that are anchored across the street, and I just wanna, if you can get a message to the owner, he did a great job, and thank you for coming in and uplifting, and building that area, thank you.
All right, um, Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, um, one of the things that we talked about at the Site Plan Committee was, the original plan came in with that drawing, and then it was changed to have the entrance on the east side of the building, and at the Site Plan Committee, we thought that, actually, the, the first drawing was, was better, would better serve the customers' parking and everything else. And I can understand why Mr. Seymour can't recognize that building, because it, it was so much different, I mean, it's, it's a thousand percent, if that's a, a possibility, uh, change in the building that's there now. Uh, the building was, currently is very rundown, dog-eared, and the new owner said that when he went in, uh, he is just completely cleaning up all of the, uh, out-of-date stuff that's in the building, and, and bringing it up to speed, and he has other buildings that he owns, other businesses that he owns, and he said, "When I get done, you're gonna be happy that I own this building," and, uh, based on this drawing, it looks like we are gonna be.
So this is a new owner, that's, that's?
A new owner, he's only owned it for a few months.
Okay, that makes it a, thank you.
All right, Mr. Moss is next.
Yeah, I'm just curious about maybe that, if you should get approval tonight, what the timeline is for construction? Is it gonna be open while it's under construction? Just curious about that.
Yes, yes, it will be open.
Okay. How long do you think this will all take, or, yeah, sure?
Not sure.
Um, I have Ms. Lawrence next, and then, uh, Ms. Jordan.
I too want to say that this is so, uh, much appreciated. It is, um, an investment in the community which is settled out by the owner, but this store is strategically located where the, its service up there is, I mean, he's gonna be very profitable down there, but its service, it has a targeted group of apartments on both sides, and, uh, it is, whenever I go there, it's just, I mean, it's customer traffic, so his investment will pay off. Is it still under the call of Cracker Barrel?
No, he's gonna change it.
What is the new name?
Uh, not for us, you know?
Okay.
That's the owner's decision.
I, I would, if you could ask?
I'd be told we don't feel leveraged.
Okay, I will ask, uh, because the council and myself were very excited about this. If you would have a rhythm cutting and, uh, community, um, welcoming this new, uh, new renovation to the community, we would love to be there to, um, to, um, say, "This is what we want," uh, and be sitting in Southfield and send the message to others, "Let's get on board," and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, well, my question to the chair, either the planner or the city attorney, can how can we put a challenge to existing businesses, the existing, uh, small businesses such as the, the storefront stores, to, you know, just lift the, the image and the building and the facade to make it look better? Can we maybe, uh?
Through the chair.
We do that.
Ms. Jordan, one tool which would be helpful and something that I'd like to bring to the council for further study is adopting some design guidelines. Uh, we do not currently have those design guidelines, whether they're for historic buildings or upgrades. We ask politely, and we try to work through it to get upgrades, but sometimes we get resistance, and because we don't have anything on the books, it makes it difficult to get. Um, this applicant was willing to, um, follow our recommendations. We like to have durable stone base layer material in the first three feet or to the window sill, that's the area that gets damaged most. We ask for handsome weathered stone materials, we want proportions, and so that is one tool I'd like to come back to the council for, um, to work with, to have that on the books so that as we each development or new development, redevelopment comes in, we got an upgrade in the façades.
Howard doesn't like to see that come to us, but what about the existing businesses that are here that really need a facelift? What can we do to?
It's, it's very difficult unless there are some type of co-violations existing. I mean, if they're in compliance and the structure meets all the requirements of the building code, the existing structure code, it's very difficult. Other than if they see, you know, buildings like this that do become improved and redeveloped, I think that that can set a, a tone, but beyond that, if it meets code, it's...
Would, would we have the liberty to at least, um, call them to a meeting to, um, suggest without forcing them to consider an upgrade? Is that, is that legal? Is that legal?
Oh, I, sure, I think anytime that there is just encouragement, I think that's fine, and I think, I think the code enforcement does that to, uh, to a significant degree, and it is, you know, when they see a notice that maybe it's in compliance, but suggesting maybe that, uh, some improvements could be noticed. So I think that's fine, we can sort of develop a program like that where we look at some of these buildings and encourage improvements to be made and some aesthetic considerations to be, to be taken into consideration.
Pam, really, we'd like for that to be considered after we get the design standards brought to us, and then after that, let's give a meeting to bring the other, uh, storefront businesses that are here, party stores that I'm thinking of, to see if they will consider, you know, a facelift, thank you.
All right, Ms. Seymour?
Well, just picking up on what Ms. Jordan said, uh, when you have something that looks new and sharp and really looks good, anybody that's nearby that doesn't look as good is gonna stand out. Uh, I like the idea of having maybe some appearance standards, but also I think what we should be requiring of, of developers is that they show us the materials that they're going to use, and that we have an approval of these materials, not just let them throw up whatever they want, so that we can see ahead of time what the, what the material is gonna be, what's the brick gonna be, what's, you know, that would help us a lot in, in being able to have enforced standards, and I think that's something that we should, uh, whether we have to, I guess we have to an ordinance or something that, um, would mandate that, but I think that's, other, other communities have it, and I think it's time that we did it too, that it made a difference.
Ms. Lawrence?
Just briefly, we went on a full court present of our, uh, gas station, and in a period of two years, we had about ten gas stations upgraded, remodeled, and there are a few left in this city that really need somebody to step on their toes because they're unacceptable. And, um, it was amazing, once we started, and it was through the planner's department, and he went through the city, asking and meeting with these, um, just near the corners in our city, and they have their curb bill needs to be blocked, and I would, I would like to see us do that, because it's the, the party stores and the, uh, the gas stations, and, um, they're missing money, so, uh, why not? Um, and most of the time, they get money to upgrade, and I don't understand why, I won't go and hold back, but I agree, we need, we need to do that, but I, I do want to say that the Site Plan Committee and the, uh, planning commission always review materials when they're doing it, and you'd wanna take it further where we have a standard, and I know Birmingham has that, but what we have, that you have to use certain types of brick and the high restrictions and all that.
They don't always see the materials, though, do they?
Oh, yeah.
All right, Mr. Lance, head to the floor.
I have never seen such chatter, an unnecessary chatter to make a decision on, on a project. Aren't you bored? Come on, let's have a vote already, huh?
Um, well, I, I'd like to add something else, uh, Mr. Lance, uh, and I just wanted to echo my colleagues, as boring as that may be, um, that store has needed attention for so long, and you're just putting something really sharp together, so I, I think collectively we're all very pleased, um, with what you're presenting us, so, uh, we thank you for that, and hopefully what you, you're doing will spur others, uh, to step up their game. And really, it's all about, uh, competition, so, um, with that, I think, uh, we've exhausted this, uh, site plan, um, so, um, we have a motion on the floor, and, uh, I'm ready to call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck to you, sir, you gave your, your, your green light.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we are now at the, uh, first of our agenda, um, we're ready to give Mr. Perkasi, uh, he's got a family situation. Um, we are now at the, uh, portion of our agenda under communication, and the, uh, first person who's requested to speak this evening is Ms. Pamela Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Pamela Gerald, P O Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number's two four eight three five two nine one eight. The residents have heard me say that it's time for a change, and we have done some good things in reference to changes that were needed, and I want to give credit where credit is due. Through Mr. Sharet's leadership, we finally got a fire chief and a police chief. Through Mr. Sharet's leadership and our fire department, um, we were able to accept the safer grant. But on a bad note, the city went into arbitration with our police officers. Residents have also heard me say that we're down probably thirty-plus police officers, it could be twenty-eight, so we wouldn't be down thirty, but twenty-eight to thirty-two police officers, and that's something that I think we need to work on in reference to, um, this arbitration and this contract. Uh, another thing that was very nice, Mr. Sharet did, we finally hired the two cadets that people have heard me talk about, we've had these two police officers been waiting for over three and a half years. So I just want to applaud Mr. Sharet and our chief, I saw this posting on our board out there, um, and thank you, Mr. Sharet, the city is looking for police cadet candidates. Um, this is amazing, this is amazing. If we could just get a contract, give the police officers the raise and what they deserve considering the elevated crime, and maybe not serious or heinous crimes, but just, they're busy, because you hear the sirens, and you've heard me say, "Whenever you hear a siren, someone in public safety, police or fire is risking their lives," so we tout about our wonderful public safety, um, let's do something about it, and give them a contract, an acceptable contract, give them the pay that they deserve, and let's show them a little bit more appreciation. Is that something that we could do, Mr. Sharet? You know, you have been called the Wizard of Oz, the Big Kahuna, and you're the city administrator, so do you think that's something that's doable to the chair?
Um, Ms., uh, Gerald, you know that we don't engage in a debate?
Okay, and then, um, to get on, um, what I think the mayor was talking about as far as aesthetics-wise, um, there are several businesses that are not too far from City Hall, like on the, uh, Ten Mile and Evergreen area near the Pancake House, that need a little TLC as far as their parking lot. So if we're gonna talk about residents and code enforcement, we need to talk about businesses and businesses for all people. We need to just take a ride through the city from eight mile north to twelve mile, uh, south, look at all the businesses, and address all the parking lots for all businesses and places. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Lance?
Yes. I would suggest that Pam Gerald become the historian of the city of Southfield.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, next we have, um, Mr. Gerard Mullins, who's requested to speak. And sir, we're ready for you.
Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mull. My address is Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. At the June seventeenth council meeting, Councilwoman Jordan claimed that she had documentation that I am a non-resident, and therefore I should not have the right to speak at this I'm here tonight to set the record straight. I am a Southfield resident, I offer the following counter documentation as proof. I have in hand my voter's ID card, and I will be casting my vote this November at Precinct Twenty at Kennedy School, a stone's throw away from where I reside in Southfield. This is my driver's license with my address on it, my Southfield address on it. Here's my Southfield library card, the homeboy version. This is the deed to my house, a facsimile besides on the city assessor's website that states that I currently enjoy a hundred percent residency status in Southfield via a P R E. Here's my City of Southfield twenty thirteen summer tax bill. This is the ninetieth Southfield tax bill I have paid, the ninetieth. I have lived in the city of Southfield continuously up to this very moment since nineteen sixty-eight, but Councilwoman Jordan has documentation that will prove otherwise. I would like to point out the following: A deed is a record of ownership and not a record of residency. A P R E is a record of residency. My P R E is a hundred percent in Southfield. For example, if my name appears on a deed for a piece of property in Farmington Hills, that doesn't mean I live at Farmington Hills, it means I own a house in Farmington Hills. To be precise, in this case, I own a fifty percent interest in a house in Farmington Hills, but I still reside a hundred percent in Southfield. When I go home tonight, I will be going home to my residency in Southfield, but Councilwoman Jordan has documentation that will prove otherwise. I wonder, besides me, does Councilwoman Jordan's scorn for non-residency apply to anyone else, such as to the city administrator, who lives in the village of Berkeley Hills, and who runs the city, and to the majority of city workers who are non-residents? Or is Councilwoman Jordan's scorn for non-residency selective, that is, reserved only for those who she doesn't like who speaks at this podium? Namely, me. Regardless of what Councilwoman Jordan says, I have earned the right to speak at this podium tonight. I am a veteran of the U.S. Army. I served from April eleventh, nineteen sixty-six, to April tenth, nineteen sixty-eight. I served from April eleventh, nineteen sixty-six, to April tenth, nineteen sixty-eight, the peak of Vietnam War. Many, many of my friends lost their lives and limbs a long, long time ago, so that I could be here and speak here freely at this podium tonight. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
Oh, one last thing, Mr. President. Would you please inform the President Potem that it's Councilwoman Jordan, that her vehicle is parked illegally in front of City Hall? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Monto.
I am tired now. I wanted to fill my time with some coherent message here. Talk about fitness. With my situation where the M.D.'s say I have a permanent partial disability, unlimited in what exercise I can do, walking is what I choose. However, I have encountered problems, not only in Oakland County, but also at the Detroit Zoo, where people approach me and accuse me of not being disabled and falsely claiming a service dog. And they do so in a rude and surly and insolent fashion. I've never met so many people in that MO as here in this place. The last time I was at the Southfield Post Office, and as I was exiting around seven o'clock heading towards Burger Park, the dog wanted to go on the grass and was watering the grass, and some tall, thin, black guy starts yelling from the doorway of the post office about my dog on the grass. There was litter there, he could have picked it up if he was worried about the grass. He was driving in a red brown sports car, and I asked him his name. He said he was the manager of the post office. And I said, even if you're the manager, you're supposed to have some manners. And he says, that doesn't matter. And then he's stalking me in the parking lot and following me out, out onto the street. What behavior is this? I've encountered even elsewhere. I went to the Oakland County Commission meeting the other night, and I entered the building, and very heavy doors that are even too heavy for my older helper dog. And oftentimes, the sheriff's deputies refuse to lift a finger to assist me in the door with the dog. So, some nice man was helping me. The sheriff's deputy stopped me before I got across the threshold as the door is leaning on me and challenges me, saying, you can't come in here with that dog. And he starts reading the tag as the door is leaning on me. I said, this door is heavy and it's leaning on me. So, he says, stand over there, as if I were a criminal suspect under arrest. You talked about Northland Mall one evening about putting a playground for children there. I understand that that mall has a reputation for being a high-crime area for some reason. I heard that before I went, entered there twice. And people said to me, there's riffraff over there. I said, I didn't see any riffraff, I just saw people. Well, I met the riffraff on July third in the evening about seven-thirty, and they all had security cop uniforms on. And as I entered the building, they cornered me. The first guy with a black eye and the last guy with a white guy that said he was supervisor. They verbally assaulted me, and that supervisor actually pushed me physically towards the door, claiming that dog is not a service dog and you're not handicapped. Get out. And he says, so let me see your papers on the dog. That's not even in accord with the A D.A. And I said, I have to show papers on the dog. He said, get out or I'll call the Southfield Police Department and have you arrested for criminal trespass. I said, I better get out of here because if the four of them are willing to fight a woman old enough to be their mother, I'm sure they could lie together and say I did something to provoke something if the police showed up and if the police was a good cop and not a road cop. Now, in the press, to change the subject, and then I had an encounter at the Detroit Zoo, that's another county with similar dynamics with the security on the ground. But we had in the press just recently, the racism issue coming up with Zimmerman and Martin cases. It is sourced from the Civil War, which we are duped about the history thereof. The racism and the segregation in the South was deliberately put in place for the very purposes that is used today. If the people were left to their own selves, there would not be an issue of racism. The N H A C P, run by, I think, Bar Association as well as the A T L U as it is, a central organization of what is it?
You have fifteen seconds, Mr. Monto.
Yeah, I'm sure you're interested in hearing what I have to say. The National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, it does not mean people with a dark complexion. It means all of us are set into different categories of artificial incorporated persons under color of law.
Your time is up.
In your chosen and being informed, Mr. Charette, you're happy to be in your American dream world. Rude person, very rude, after I waited here all these hours, listening to your talk.
I'm next calling Mr. Doug Panani. He's, let the record show that he is not in attendance this evening. And then, our final person who's asked to be recognized by council this evening is Mr. Toby Rhodes. And, Mr. Rhodes, I want to say something to you before you begin speaking. You have your, I fully support your First Amendment rights to come and speak, and we've heard your message over and over again. One thing I will not tolerate this evening is name-calling, as you did on the last occasion that you were before us.
I didn't name-call anybody.
You most certainly did.
Is that slander?
And I'm telling you, what will happen, I will ask you to sit down if you start that.
But you slandered me in the public forum on the record, it's on the witness list.
Your time is beginning right now, Mr. Rhodes.
My name is Toby Rhodes. I live at one-seven-zero-zero-one New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, 480-75. Last time I was here, I was slandered by someone here for what I said. They accused me of being a criminal, and it was, once again, it seemed like someone wanted to attempt to slander me again. I have no problem with filing lawsuits because I'm not a stranger to the court system and I know what the process is. And I don't understand why you want to attack me, someone who just wants to speak about the issues that I think are important to me. But for some reason, it seems like you say that you respect someone's right to speak, but that's just lip service. If you then turn around and then threaten us and say, we're not going to allow you to do this, and you're not going to allow them to do that, you just contradicted what you just said. And that, after being here, like you said, for a lot of time since last year, talking about my issues, they're not seeing any action. But I didn't really expect any action to be taken because the reputation that I get from people I speak with who live in Southfield, how many black people, people who've lived here, people who've grown up here, people who've left, is that they don't have a lot of respect for the decision-making that occurs here. They don't feel as if their voice is heard, or that is respected, or that is considered. And because of that, they don't feel any reason to be involved, which is why, when I come to the city council meetings, I hardly see anyone my age here. What I notice is that there's like a generation gap. Basically, you don't see anybody in their thirties and pretty much do their forties in Southfield, and that's not a good sign. That shows that, in a sense, that the Southfield is dying. And what you get is you get this sort of like sheep mentality, this lending mentality, where everybody says the same thing. There's no difference of opinion, it's all the same thing all the time. It's almost like being in a cult when I come in here. It's rather remarkable when I see it. Because when you go to cities where people are involved, where they have civic involvement, where they think that it's important to get their message out and have their voice heard, there's a lot of contention, there's arguments, there's discussions, there's back and forth because people think it's important, they care, they're emotional, they're invested. But here, you don't get that. Here, it just seems like a sort of detachment, sort of like, we're just going through the motions, we're just warming a seat, we're just patting ourselves on the back. Because it's amazing how many times I hear, oh, you're doing a great job. Why would you say that? I mean, when I think of that, I think like Katrina when Bush told that guy in charge of FEMA that he was doing a great job. He was a fool and he was a failure. And yet, I hear that about the city attorney when I'm sitting back there, you're doing a great job. And I'm like, after all the things I said, that's your response? Well, my attitude to that is, if you're going to put your little career on the line for that decision for the city attorney, then if there's a problem there, then I guess you're willing to say that you're going to step aside because you made the wrong decision. And I said it over and over again, same thing with the city administrator. They get paid these huge amounts and they don't do anything constructive. I think about my block since two thousand eight, and it's lost a hundred thousand dollars in property value per house. That's two million dollars on one block, gone. And yet, no one's been fired, no one's been prosecuted, no one's been held accountable, no one's been held responsible. That's one thing I notice about Southfield, there's no accountability, no responsibility. Nobody wants to take the charge and take the lead. They all just want to sit back, take it easy, and go through the motions. And in that kind of situation, you're headed for disaster. Because we're not in a situation that's good economic times. I mean, we're in a desperate, dire situation, we're in a crisis mode, but we don't have crisis leadership, we don't have crisis decision-makers. We have a bunch of seat warmers, office holders, job seekers, just trying to go through the motions. And in Detroit, Detroit has a lot to offer. I mean, there was a time when Detroit didn't have a lot to offer. It was going through some problems, but it's really come back strong. I mean, they got the campus marches, you got the river water, you got the stadiums. That showed the city, that's alive and thriving. I mean, you have protests, you have tickets, people care. But you come out to Southfield, Southfield feels like it's not. Ninety-eight it felt like it was something, but it doesn't feel like that anymore. And it feels like the leadership is stuck back in the twentieth century. We need leadership for the twenty-first century. We need people who understand the internet, who understand Twitter and Facebook and how to use social media, social bookmarking, social networking. People who understand how the world is going to be going forward, not the way the world is dead. Because I look at the Southfield police, that racist trash, all they do all day long is just attack black people. That's the way it was, and this is the disaster it's led to, destroy property values, it's going to keep getting worse. And waste that property.
Mr. Rhodes.
And because of that, because of this lack of imagination, this lack of a dynamic element, this lack of people who are younger, who have a future, who are going to see the consequences of it, that Southfield is in a lot of trouble.
Your time is up. All right. Next, we move on to the council portion of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I will move the approval of the travel expense report of Councilwoman Jordan for expenses incurred while attending Michigan Chronicle Pancake and Politics in Detroit from May twenty-ninth to May thirty-first, two thousand thirteen.
All those in favor? Speak by by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. That's a, did you?
No, I think that's a, I typically don't have to.
Okay. So, it's a pick-to vote. Thank you. If you want to clarify that. Anything else under council? I do have an announcement that I'd like to make on behalf of Mr. Lance. Mr. Lance, on July nineteenth, was awarded a Spirit of Detroit Award, and it says, is presented herewith as an expression of the gratitude and esteem of the citizens of Detroit to Mr. Sid Lance for his tireless support of our nation's veterans in recognition of exceptional achievement, outstanding leadership, and dedication to improving the quality of life, and it's signed by all nine members of the Detroit State Council. Congratulations, Mr. Lance.
Thank you.
Other members of council, any items to present? Mr. Frager?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I'd just like to say that Rudy House, our representative in Lansing, is sponsoring a meeting tomorrow evening at the Michigan First Credit Union from six o'clock to eight o'clock. He's having experts in there who will talk about what's known as Obamacare. Any questions that people have, they should try to get answers, and the experts are there to explain, so. There are a lot of seats in that room, so show up.
Again, this is tomorrow?
Tomorrow evening, six o'clock to eight o'clock.
At the library?
No, no. That's Michigan First.
Michigan First Credit.
Yes, sir.
In the Canadian.
Yes, it's just on the other side of six ninety-six on Evergreen.
Okay. Anything else, council? I do have one other announcement. On June twenty-ninth, the Southfield Historical Society and the City Planning Department conducted a Mid-Century Modern Architecture Tour. And I'm pleased to announce that the tour was, all fifty-five seats on the bus were taken, Miss Seymour joined us. And because of that tour, we were contacted by the International Committee for the Documentation and Conservation of Building Sites and Neighborhoods of the Modern Movement. And they had asked us, this is an organization out of New York City, they had asked us to become part of their movement, and asked us to repeat the Southfield Architecture, Mid-Century Modern Architecture Tour. The tour weekend is across the country, there'll be Mid-Century Modern Tours of various states across the country on October fifth or sixth. We plan to do a second tour on Sunday, October sixth, at two P.M., starting again at the Northland Theater. I'm really pleased to have that recognition. If there's nothing else from council, then we'll go on to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to share, I know it's from press release, but I was really pleased to be invited to the White House by the First Lady. As you know, I've had a Let's Move camp since the First Lady initiated the Let's Move program to fight child obesity. The camp has been every year, eight weeks on Saturdays, totally funded by sponsors, and it has been a tremendous achievement. I feel, I enjoyed it so much, seeing the kids get exposure to activities. Detroit Pistons, Detroit Tigers, cross boxing, the Pistons Tigers Lions, our Southfield High Football Team, we have Zuma Class, Disney has participated, McDonald's has sponsored the lunch and leave, ended every year with a pool party. And it was, on a national level, there were probably about fifteen of us who were invited to meet with the First Lady to be recognized for that. And the city of Southfield got that recognition, so it was a nice thing to be there. She was very gracious in saying how much she appreciated across the country, how it was providing leadership in fighting child obesity. And I will be having a Let's Move day this year, still the eight weeks, but we will have a day of activity and we will be announcing that program very shortly. Also, one of the things that we need in this city is, in economic development, is looking at best practices. And I know the council gets that opportunity when they go to the National League of Cities. In the Michigan Association of Mayors, I'm invited, mayors from all over the state, invited to different communities to look at what's working. Well, Jackson, Mississippi, they took an outdated obsolete mall of a million square feet and turned it into a medical mall. And so, myself, and Alex Seves, and a business owner, and the D D A, took a trip to Jackson, Mississippi, and it surpassed what I thought it could be. The Mississippi Hospital, the University of Mississippi, the federal government, all kinds of doctors leased out a million square feet in a mall, and there's a waiting list. They totally rehired a mall that was described as almost identical to the mall we have in our city. And it's an opportunity for us to look at some best practices and continue the dialogue. So, we're very excited about that. You're going to be hearing more, and I would like to do a presentation to the council to look at how to do a presentation to the council, so, look at how we talked about what are we going to do with Northland, and here's a best practice. And it started by someone who said, I did not want this piece of property to become decayed in our community and accident. So, I'm, I'm very excited about that. Last thing I want to say that we have the opportunity, uh, Mr. Cyber and Miss Seymour to attend the 10th anniversary?
Yes.
Of the Miracle League. And anyone who's participated in the Miracle League know what a phenomenal concept that is, and they are now entering a partnership with the Easter, Easter Fields. And they were very appreciative of the city, of the council, and publicly recognized the council a number of times, and, um, for, uh, taking the initiative to vote on something that was branched into the state, and now 10 years later, it is, uh, has received national awards, so we're, we're very, very happy about that. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. President, anything else this evening?
Yes, so, very quickly, first of all, I'd like to, uh, applaud the mayor for her appointment of the city attorney and council for their unanimous endorsement of, uh, newly appointed city attorney and going forward to working with her.
Uh, Tim, I'm going to ask a question, maybe, uh, what number of city attorneys are you in the history of Southfield?
It would have been Sig, was he the first?
No.
Sig Barris is joining. Gin, was Jim Gin, was he the first? I think him.
Look at me, Nick.
Uh, how many were there? Is he probably?
I think, we'll, we'll have the answer by tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, I was just curious.
Yeah, next, Nick. Um, a couple of things, real quickly, uh, Ms. DeMato, I know both these folks aren't here, but as a matter of public information and her sweeping commentary, one of them, um, made a comment about borrowed money, and I just want to, I wanted to be, it's a very inaccurate statement, and as a matter of fact, uh, we have our city treasures, uh, waiting in the wings here. Uh, he, one of his functions is debt management, and I can tell you that we're very, we have variable municipal debt here, and compared to our capacity. And so, we're very cautious about the use of debt, and we are not living on borrowed money, let me stretch the imagination. We do not borrow money daily, uh, as some cities do. We do not borrow short-term money, as some cities do, and so I want to cover the record on that. Number two, with regard to grant funding, uh, we're aggressive on seeking grant funding, but we do not depend on it for our bread and butter. So, uh, we, we understand the grant funding is, is tight, and, but we, again, uh, utilize it appropriately, but we do not, um, uh, over, uh, depend on it to an extraordinary amount. And, uh, last but not least, there's a disrespectful comment made by Mr. Rhodes, who kind of specializes in, in that kind of rhetoric. And I just want to say, our, our, our police departments continuously be held in the highest regard in the state of Michigan, and their expertise is sought through, throughout the United States. Their record, uh, is second to none in terms of how they conduct themselves and, uh, how they police the city of Southfield.
Thank you, um, Mr. Scherr, we all have a balanced budget. Um, next we go on to the attorney, anything this evening?
Something this evening, Mr. President.
Okay.
I do want to say that, uh, we made history tonight, she's the first female city attorney to have a duty.
All right, uh, next we go to the clerk, treasurer, planner, assessor, and engineer, and, uh, we have a travel report, Mr. President.
Yes. I move that we approve the expense report for Nancy L.L. Banks, our city clerk, for International Institute of Municipal Court Conference of Atlantic City, New Jersey.
All right, moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. All right.
Council President, if I could just say something, please? Um, I'd like to remind everyone that, um, there will not be a primary election in the city of Southfield, um, in August. There, we have quick press releases out, there is information on the front page of our website, and if anyone has any questions, just, they're more than welcome to call the city clerk's office, 248-796-5150. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we're going to go to our treasurer, and, uh, earlier this year, we had a presentation, uh, from Andy Meidner, our Oakland County Treasurer, and, uh, it's on the Step Forward Michigan Program, and we have a new development with that. So, um, Mr. Loenberg is here to give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. President, and fellow elected officials. Uh, just want to notify the viewing audience, all residents of Southfield, a reminder, as the council president had mentioned, we had the Oakland County Treasurer, Andy Meidner, come down to speak with this body, and, uh, for the residents to notify them, that was the program called Step Forward Michigan, and that was to provide relief for people who are behind on their taxes, facing foreclosure, and to help them, up to $30,000 on an affordable loan, which, as long as they stay in their residence and make good on their payments going forward, it'll help them to eliminate any previous outstanding debts that they had regarding taxes, and even helping foreclosure relief with the bank even. So, as another step that, uh, to help spread the message, for anyone who did not see that previous presentation, uh, we're going to have a partnership together with Fifth Third Bank and the Oakland County Treasurer's Office, they're going to be bringing an e-bus, it's called, on Wednesday, August 7th, from 2:00 to 7:00 P.M. They'll be in front of the Southfield Public Library or private municipal complex over here, providing free credit reports and providing counseling as far as how to, um, apply to this program. It's a, it's a complicated application, but there are people who are willing to help with the process between the Oakland County Treasurer's Office and other financial institutions that are willing to help, because we want to have people stay in their houses and increase our property values in Michigan. And so, uh, this is a concerted effort that the city of Southfield is participating in, and so hopefully, people will come and take advantage of this program, once again, on Wednesday, August 7th, from 2:00 to 7:00 P.M. And while you're coming down for, for that, there's also, as, as an ex officio under Parks Recreation Board, I'll put a little plug in for an event, uh, that's going to be taking place on the front wall of City Hall, it's called the Semorifest, and that's going to be taking place that same evening, on August 7th, starting at 5:30 P.M. So there'll be activities for the entire family, so hopefully everyone will participate in that. I'd like to also, uh, join the course of, uh, congratulatory remarks to our new city attorney, and, uh, she's done a phenomenal job for us until now, and we're sure that she will continue doing the wonderful job. I've only heard great accolades from outside legal people, who have to deal with her on a regular basis, and they have the highest esteem for her and acknowledge the wealth of information that she, that she has. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Loenberg. Mr. Planner, anything else this evening? Mr. Assessor, I see you out in the audience, anything this evening? Okay.
Hello?
I'm sorry?
I want to say on behalf of our assessor that he was here to address the problems of the, of the gentleman that did not appear, that was on the list, and so he spent a lot of time in preparation, and that's appreciated.
Good, I hope, uh, you were able to help everyone. All right, uh, we have nothing to schedule at this point, we do have, uh, two meetings already posted in August, um, and then we have portments to enact, so I think this goes to Mr. Fraser.
Mr. President, I move that we enact ordinance number 1608, support.
Been moved, um, by Fraser, supported by Jordan, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Fraser, once again.
Move that we enact ordinance number 1609, which covers natural loans.
Support. It's been moved by Fraser, supported by Jordan, all those in favor?
Aye. And I move that we enact ordinance number 1610, which is, uh, was brought forward by our, our city clerk, to consolidate the precincts.
Support. Supported by, um, Mr. Moss, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, I move that we enact ordinance number 1613, which covers carports and building height exceptions, that was brought by our planner.
Support. All right, moved by Fraser, supported by Moss, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're good. Um, I think that's, that's it for this evening, uh, we thank you all for your patience, and this meeting is adjourned.